So.
Thank you very much for coming in here.
Yeah.
My name is Edna Alzubin and I'm a member of the Cambridge chapter of Mother's God's Law.
My name is Steve Miller. I'm a member of Cambridge No. 350 Mass.
Okay, I'll be happy to be delighted. And we'll be emceeing tonight Climate Justice, Climate Issues Board for City Council candidates on behalf of a coalition of groups that helped organize this event, which includes, in addition to our two organizational goals, the Green Cambridge, the Cambridge City Growers, and the Mystic River Watershed Association.
Primary focus of tonight's event is to learn where candidates stand on key locally impactful climate-related issues that they will probably have to vote on for against during the next council term. And to make sure that everyone had an informed response, last week, we sent all the candidates through whatever emails we could find, a list of the questions and background information. Given the reality, I'm willing to bet half of them never even saw the email. But we wanted people to have a chance to be prepared and to come, not as a surprise, no gimmick, don't catch anybody unawares, really want truthful, solid answers. And you all have the questions yourself, so you know what they're going to answer. Great. Yes.
Okay, and to be clear, we invited all the candidates, and none of our organizations are legally allowed to endorse anyone. However, while some candidates declined invitation, most are here. And as you can see, CCTV is filming, and we'll broadcast the events over the coming weeks.
In addition, we're live streaming it on Zoom, and we'll be posting that through the website as we go forward. Just to be doubly clear, this is not an endorsing process, this is an informational process. Neither of our two organizations, none of the other sponsors, are endorsing anybody before or after tonight. Now, as you can tell, we've divided up the over twenty candidates into three panels, each of which we're going to ask the same question. We apologize, but we're also going to have to be extremely strict about time. Our brutal timekeeper over here, Deb, who used to be part of the wrestling room, she's going to tell you when you have thirty seconds, fifteen, five, okay, and then we're going to catch you off and move it down the row. So Elena will start the panel by asking the question and then walking through each of you to have an answer.
Okay, and you already received the question, so I'm only going to read it once. So you're all newcomers. So sorry, you're all newcomers, so you'll get a newcomer's version. So given that by far the largest amount of greenhouse gas emissions in Cambridge comes from building, if elected, would you seek to maintain, shave back, or expand the scope of the BUDO emissions reduction policies? The BUDO stands for Building Energy Use Disclosure Order, and some amendments were passed in June of this year. So you have one minute, and we can start.
The technical part here is.
Grabbing the microphone.
Grab the microphone and speak right into it.
So.
Don't press anybody.
Yeah.
Thank you. If I stand up?
Yeah, I could if you wanted.
Just so, I'm not that tall, so I'm just going to. So I'm here, I am one of the candidates. So I, I think, you know, the question is pretty self-replantatory, the largest amount of greenhouse gas emissions in Cambridge from large buildings. So if elected, I would, I would certainly maintain. And I would, if it's, if it's reasonable with community input, I would probably also expand. So maintain, to expand the scope of the BUDO emissions reduction policies, simply because we do have a climate crisis. You know, we just have to be realistic, we have to be honest, and I think we have to do things to, to improve that. So that's my, that's my.
Well, good, good afternoon, everyone. I'm so glad that you all are here. You're taking some time out to invite many of the candidates to come out. Before I answer the question, I want to give a shout out to Mother's God of Crime, who lobbied city councillors for over two years, and in the leadership of Quentin Donovan, along with Councilman Owen, for passing BUDOs. I would look to expand BUDO and figure out how we can include residential buildings, because we know that BUDO extends to medical facilities, and we know that it extends, extends to commercial buildings and school buildings. So I would simply put, essentially look at how we can expand it and strengthen it. I think we're in a, we take, we've taken a step in the right direction, and I'm really grateful for it. And I feel, I still think we have a little bit more work to go, a little more work to do, and a little more ways to go to reach net zero. And I'm willing to fight for that on the council, as I do have a climate background, but I can unpack that in a little bit. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. It's good to see everyone. My name is Aya Alzubi. I take the She/Her series. And I just want to start off by saying, I'm a young candidate in the race, and as many of you know, young people are helping support lead, leading the climate justice movement. So just, I do, I do want you to know that I'm someone that you can lean in on in terms of listening on this issue. But in terms of this question, I would definitely work on expanding, because here's the reality. Emissions is something we need to address constantly. And we need to recognize, while pushing on large commercial developments, especially with Harvard and MIT, it's a good first step, because these institutions do have the highest emissions in Cambridge, especially Harvard University. And its reluctance to act on this is unacceptable. If they want to be climate conscious, they have to live up to it, and this is something that we need to keep pushing them on. And as Vernon mentioned, we do also need to address residential building emissions. So that is something I also want to look into, because there comes the dichotomy of understanding there's low-income residents, residents of color, there's, there's a lot more nuances.
Thank you. Very happy that you changed the timekeeper color from green to red. So I was afraid of green last time. So well, I would like to maintain BUDO, I'd like to optimize it. I don't want to say expand, because none of us know what that means. I would like to, I'd like to support some exemptions for local churches, not-for-profit organizations, if they cannot have the means. They can disclose. I really support a disclose, but I don't want them to be prematurely scaling down, hurt their business. Neither do I want to hurt MIT or Harvard. As long as they have innovation going on for those buildings, I think it's fine. If Einstein wanted to burn more coal in my city and human technology of millions of households for the globe to reduce more emission, that's fine, too. So optimizing it is my goal. I support it. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Doug Brown. I might know a few of you. I want to thank you for hosting tonight. I would say I maintain, but I also, like many people have said, I think we need to maintain with a caveat, which is we need to look and see how we're doing going forward. And where we can find tweaks, we need to find those tweaks to keep pushing it. One of the challenges, I think, is that it's expensive, and that's why there's been pushback over BUDO over the past year or so, is it's expensive to electrify. And I think the other thing that is a concern is Eversource may or may not be ready for full electrification. So I think there's work to be done on the other side to make sure that the capacity is there when we get to the point where we're a hundred percent electric.
Everyone, thank you so much for being here. Thank you to the organizers for organizing the events for those of you who are on Zoom. Good to see you. So I just want to say that as a mom to a sixteen-month-old, I really think about our planet and think about how we preserve it so that we have a place to be and have a place to live. And thinking about the work and the resources in Cambridge, how do we support businesses across the state and residential to do this work? So I think maintaining it is one, but I also want to be clear to say that it's important to educate. It's important that we're educating our community about what BUDO really means and what does it look like across all of our communities, all of our stakeholders, and what is our small piece to the bigger pie. So those are the works, that's the work that I want to be able to do, is to educate our community, really think about how we push on those who have the need to make it happen now, and support those to get there. So if that's small businesses, if that is nonprofit and religious spaces, I want to make sure that we're doing that work, because that is critical information that we have to provide for my baby and for the rest of our babies. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all very much. This is, you started very smoothly. I hope the rest of the panel respected the time, and thank you, Deb, for being our wonderful timekeeper. So the second question is on the state model. So Cambridge has applied to be one of ten cities allowed by the legislature to pilot a near-total ban on the use of fossil fuel infrastructure in new construction. If elected, will you encourage the adoption of these policies for new construction, or seek to withdraw Cambridge from the program? And you each have thirty seconds to respond.
All right. I, if elected, I would encourage the adoption of these policies for, for new construction. I think, I think Cambridge is a great city. It's, it's smart, and it's got a lot of capabilities. I think we should set it for, for the rest of the world. So in my opinion, I think we should. It's a new change, but I think it's a change that we should take, and we should be able to show the world that, how to do it, and how they can follow.
I would support keeping these policies to help us transition to net zero, because we know that climate change is the greatest existential threat to our human existence. And if we don't act now, trying to adapt to extreme weather in the future will become more costly, and more people will suffer. So I think opting into this program, it's a pilot city, the pilot program for ten cities, will help us get to net zero. And ultimately, I think we want to be a beacon in this country to say that we can do it, so you can do it. So I would support it.
I will also echo what fellow candidates have said. I would encourage the adoption of this, and mainly because, right now, even with BUDO, we are currently working on pushing back against emissions, right? So it wouldn't necessarily make sense if we are allowing for new construction to have carbon emissions. So I would be someone who supports this, just out of pure common sense.
Well, absolutely. We need to lead in the state and in the world. And five, five years ago, I may be hesitant, but now there's plenty of new technology all around the globe that points to better solution. For example, passive house in Europe, hydrogen technology in Japan, and battery technology from China. And many places, we should use more technology, not only achieve net zero greenhouse emission, but also eventually zero dependence on city lights.
Um, I would say it's, it's a noble goal, and that I support the program. And I think we need to do everything we can to, to decarbonize. I think, like many things that the city has confronted us with, there are trade-offs. One of the big trade-offs here is cost. And I think that's why there's been concerns among various groups. I think one particular area that's challenging is in the restaurant industry. So I've heard from restaurant workers that it is hard, because they have to rethink how they actually cook. And so I think, for me personally, I think we need to think about incentives to encourage people to move in the right direction, not necessarily just mandate it.
Thank you so much for the question, and I totally agree with my colleagues here. I think that it is important that we are not only educating, but we're looking at the cost, that we're doing listening sessions, that we're talking to our stakeholders, especially our small businesses, that this probably will impact, I agree with. I think it's an ambitious goal, but if we're not doing listening sessions to see what an impact will be, especially that cost impact, then we could probably agree that this threatens to our businesses and some other stakeholders of our project. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, compliments to this panel. So we're going to move on so quickly to one of the other big issues. Building is the major source of emissions. The second is transportation. One of the key ways, other than going electric, or electric cars, and that's sort of something that seems to be a title way that's going to be hitting, is non-motorized travel. In Cambridge, while there are increasing numbers of electric vehicles in coming years, many guest-powered cars will remain active, and congestion will continue to increase even if the cars are EV. Encouraging safe mobility by foot and bicycle and transit is the most effective way we have for reducing both pollution and congestion. This is a quick one. Yes or no? If elected, would you support the continuation of the current cycling ordinance safety policy, requiring the rapid creation of separated bike lanes and safe pedestrian crossing in all our major roads?
We have a suggestion from the audience. Before you reply, please say your name, because people sit in the back and read the, the sign. So if you could say who you are again.
Thank you for the question. My name is Peter Schu, Schu, like Schu, spelled H-S-U. Kind of weird. I ask my parents all the time. They still can't read the name. The answer is yes, I would, I would, I would, I would, I would support the cycling ordinance safety policy. I, this was, so I bike more than five miles a day from my, from my living place to Oxford. I, you know, it, it was a complicated decision process. I actually had to read the pledge, and then I talked to a lot of people, but in, in the end, I said no.
Vernon Walker, and I do support the current cycling ordinance safety policy. I signed the bike pledge. But what I would do different is I would center community voices before we rip up the streets and pit cycle lanes there and protected bike lanes, because I think community input is important, and community process is important. So before installing more bike lanes, which I think we desperately need in our path to create safer streets for cyclists, motorists, and pedestrians, our community input and hearing conversations from community members, I would seek out, and then take that information back to departments and City Hall, to say, well, let's rethink how we want to do this, because this is what the community is thinking about. Thank you.
My name is Aya Alzubi. I do support this, and also want to be intentional with what Vernon was saying. We do need to make sure we're taking in community input, because each neighborhood's different, each street is different. But I also want to take a few of the other seconds I have to just say, we do need to be ambitious, but we can also choose to be conscientious, because the clock is ticking, and climate, the climate crisis is real. And we don't really have the time to really push back on the ambitiousness we have, but we can step up and say, we can be more conscientious and understand the nuances in the conversation as well.
I'm Hao Wen. You've probably heard, heard me from saying that I want our city to be both the bicycle-friendly city, as well as senior and local business-friendly city. I just take whatever Vernon has said about community engagement first. We, as a city, need to explore green transportation, such as a mid-sized electrical bus, replacing a lot of cars and a lot of slow, slow vehicles. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Doug Brown. I'm, I'm the founder of Friends of the Water Time Greenway, but I'm also a parent of three kids, and they all bike. And so for me, I am a signer of the bike pledge, saying that we won't, we won't delay it, and we won't weaken it. That said, I do believe we can always have better outcomes. And I think one thing for me as a neighborhood organizer is, I think neighborhood input always makes the better outcome. So I think it is important to have that balance.
Thanks for the question. I would say I live right near Garden Street in Concord, Adley. I did not know about the infrastructure change to Garden Street until the weekend before the installation. That is unfortunate, and very unfortunate for my neighbors. It's important that we are thinking about communication and process. It's kind of what we think that we do as part of our city. We have to be intentional around that. If we're not listening, then we cause a lot of divisions. And that's what we are right now, whether you're a business owner, whether you're a resident, we're not censoring our elderly, we're not censoring those who have physical, you know, handicaps and abilities and stuff. We're not censoring those. Thank you. So I cannot find a match.
Thank you. So on to the next question. And this time, we'll start with Ms. Wilson, because the audience generally is more fair and that way. So our tree canopy doesn't significantly reduce the city's carbon footprint. However, it does strengthen our climate change resilience by lowering air temperature and absorbing pollution. But the tree canopy is notably thin in areas of the city occupied by low-income families. The city's tree canopy master plan contains numerous suggestions for both improving the overall number of trees and decreasing the current inequity. Which of its suggestions would you prioritize for funding and implementation? You all have one minute, and we'll start with Ms. Wilson.
Thank you so much for the question. As the one who wrote, Ayesha Wilson, I don't think I said that in the last round, but Ayesha Wilson is the name. And what I would be the most wanting to make sure is that we are in keeping our tree canopy. I grew up in North Cambridge, right across from Jerry's Pit, or Jerry's Pond. Depends on how old you are, you know, the whole, right? Yeah. It's, so what has been proposed by the city is to increase by maybe about two dozen trees, right, in that area that has been proposed from the pride of Jerry's Pond, shout out to Eric and the crew, who might be in the building, is that there will be several dozens of trees, almost a hundred-plus trees that will be planted in that area. We must support that and more. There's no reason why we're not actually doing more around our tree canopy to make sure that the shade and the coolness is, is, it is important to our community, and it's what's going to keep our, our state, our heat so as low as possible. So we have work to do there, and I appreciate us doing the work and being supportive to that. Thank you.
Hi, Doug Brown. You know, the Urban Forest Master Plan has a lot of, a lot of things that it's focused on. I think, for me, the starting point is that wherever we already have a tree well, we fill it. I look at empty tree wells all day. And so I would like to see what we plant bigger, because I think the stats find and show that the smaller the trees we plant, the less successful they are, up to the point of, the smallest trees are only successful half of the time. I would recommend we have a comprehensive tree health survey across the city, so we understand what we're looking at right now. As a goal, rather than tracking twenty thousand street trees, I'd like to see one per person. So that's a hundred and twenty thousand street trees. Okay, that's ambitious. But other cities are doing that, and I think it's important that we think like that. I think the, the other thing I, I don't particularly care for is that people can opt out of street trees. So I think if it's a public infrastructure, it's important to the public. You can't opt out of a sidewalk, you shouldn't be allowed out of the sidewalk tree.
Thank you.
Great. I'm Hao Wen. Anyone go to Mount Auburn Hospital to work and just visit? Great, thank you. So if you come out of Mount Auburn Hospital, you look at across the street, that's my house, I'm probably owning three trees. Really magnificent. That's probably most beautiful trees in the city. I love the trees along the Memorial Drive. I love the trees in, around the Fresh Pond Conservation. Tree is very easy to build, and I think it's a key performance indicator. We just can't. I will prioritize funding to plant more trees to reduce our impervious surface around the city, which is an easy thing to do. I would call on Harvard, MIT, the arborist, and Bright is mine, to help us plan it, and let's count it every year. Thank you.
My name is Aya Alzubi. I first want to take a, take a second to appreciate what Doug had to say. I, I do believe our tree canopy is not evenly distributed. On the report that I was reading, it said they're not evenly distributed across the city's neighborhoods, thirteen percent to thirty-nine percent. And that lower end is particularly in high-density areas. And as someone who's residing here in Cambridge Port and very close to Central Square, I recognize that we need to be very conscientious about increasing green spaces and access to green spaces in those high-density areas, especially with extreme weather coming up. I also, as someone who recognizes Jerry's Pit or Pond, however you want to call it, we got the money there. The six hundred thousand dollars, it was there, but nothing happened with it. So we have the ability to actually make the impact when we take the steps we take. And this is something that I also want to look into, knowing that this is an environmental justice group, that we got to the finish line, but we didn't just follow, we didn't follow through on it.
One of, Vernon Walker, one of the things that I would recommend for the master plan is education. So for over four years, I was the manager slash director of an organization called Communities Responding to Extreme Weather. And what we did is we helped prepare folks that live in urban heat islands, Dorchester, Mattapan, Brockton, et cetera, for extreme heat, because those communities suffer from the urban heat island effect. And I would bring this same level of leadership to the council and prioritize in the port, prioritize in Ringe Avenue, where we see urban heat islands are, the communities are suffering from the urban heat island effect. Also, trees make the difference. So I would advocate for strengthening and expanding and funding the urban forest friend, where folks can adopt a tree next to them. And I would advocate hiring coordinators to be able to work with neighborhood residents to ensure that every tree is adopted, because we know that climate change is going to bring droughts. So we need to ensure that these young trees have water, and I think that's how we can begin to care and to expand our tree canopy.
I, whoever suggested going the first thing, thank you, I love you too. So I, you know, it's, it's, it's easy for me to say I agree with most of my candidate colleagues' opinion on, on what to do with trees. I, I do think we need more trees. I think we also need more quality trees. And I think we, we need to involve experts in this type of thing. Meaning, the first sentence of the question says that it doesn't, tree canopy doesn't significantly reduce our emission. We have, we have tree selections that can actually maximize or be better at doing these things. And I think we should involve these experts to kind of give recommendations. And I, and I agree that we should involve community, that education, that everyone is on, on, on top of this, agreeing with what we have. And even if they disagree, I agree with Doug on this. I, you know, I think, I think we should do it, because there is a climate crisis, and we need to, we need to do our best in solving, not just for us, but for our next generation.
Thank you all. And I guess, given that prayer, we will start again with Wilson. And this is a complicated question. So we've got magnificent two minutes for answer listeners. Cambridge is experiencing intense development of both housing and commercial space. What controls is any beyond what already exists? Would you put on development to ensure that new construction contains efficient number of affordable units, and that commercial development does not overwhelm the city's environmental protection infrastructure? And we say that knowing that our low taxes are partly paid for this, by this development. So that's the tension.
Thank you for the question. And yes, this is a really important question, and we have a lot of work to do here when we think about how, how we talk about development in our community, and how we are engaging all of our stakeholders. So when we're looking at projects that are being developed, who are they transferring, what are they actually, what's the outcome for? So if we're looking at affordable housing, it's not just looking at twenty percent. We are dealing with a housing crisis in our city. And so we have to make sure that we're doing more than just twenty percent. And I was working with our developers, especially those for-profits, because we know where they're sitting. They're here to make money, right? But they can't make money off of low-income people. And when we know that we need more affordable, and we're talking about the thirty, the fifty percent, and even some up to maybe eighty percent of AMI income housing units, that we have a lot of work to do there. I think what's also important in terms of this conversation is looking at the AHL, right, and making sure that we're supporting that. Because if we're not bringing developers to the table to really demand kind of what is the need for our community, then we're just allowing folks to be out there doing whatever they want. Why? Because they have the money to do so. And so we need to be aggressive, especially with our city land, land that we can actually purchase, in order to say, is this going to be a hundred percent affordable land, or is it going to be fifty percent? What does that actually look like? But we do need to meet the need, and we need to be aggressive in how we do that. The other part to this, too, is looking at areas. So I grew up in affordable housing, right? And I recognize that I grew up around all white people. We were all on food stamps and most there and all this stuff. And that's okay. Growing up, I didn't realize I was poor. But now, as an adult, I would love to have said, wow, what would it have looked like if I had four different social economic statuses next to my neighbors, right? So I think there's a lot of work that we can do, but we have to be more inclusive of our, of our community. Thank you.
Hi, Doug Brown. I was a, a member of the, the Envision L-Way Plan that produced the, the ideas for L-Way. I was the author of the moratorium that prevented it from turning into labs. And then I was on the board, sorry, a member of the group that finished zoning, which was just recently passed. And then I was on the board, sorry, a member of the group that um finished zoning, which was just recently passed. The simplest way to get housing is to mandate it. So we required forty percent housing so that it wasn't all labs. Okay, I would like to see, we have twenty percent affordable. I would like to see us do more for middle income housing. I feel like our essential workers deserve to live here too. Our nurses, our doctors, our, sorry, nurses, our firefighters, our teachers especially. We have teachers commuting from New Hampshire. Um, I think we need to find a place for them as well and I, I think we need to, we need to be really aggressive with that. I think personally, I um, I refuse to believe that housing and green space are mutually exclusive. I think you can have both. Um, I would also, as a corollary, say that pedestrian bridges and green space don't, aren't usually uh exclusive. I mean, we ought to be able to fund both. I think, you know, it's a lot of little things, whether you require green factor scoring, which we did in the climate zoning that we put forward. Um, or in some cases, just setting it up so that the planning board can't waive green space requirements. Okay, we have requirements we ought to follow. And so um, I think those are my two big points, I'm going to leave it there.
You found your time. You can find me at votehow.com. So uh I like, I like this question, but I think I need every second to answer it. Uh, but Steve framed it perfectly. Uh, we need to uh have a controlled or well planned and supported growth. Uh, you know, for all development, commercial and residential. Uh, the city's uh characters or uh the heritage can be preserved while we can have supported housing. Uh, I am with Doug that uh, uh, we, I'm big on gentrification problem. Uh, a lot of teachers, researchers and scientists are leaving our city because we are too expensive to live. But they cannot get any housing assistance in current assistance structure. So we need to develop, I'm less on how many percentage for affordable housing. I'm big on mixed housing because uh I think eradication of poverty can help people pay for housing, it's much better solution to build a lot of house for low income folks and not caring how they can grow their income too. So um, uh, so I I think the um, it's a very complicated question. Uh, I think we all need to uh take a breath and uh have a controlled, well-supported uh growth. A population growth is a historical trend and it's inevitable in some sense. But we need to grow our population responsibly. Uh, we can't have uh people living in our city, but we lack our infrastructure, school, fire firefighters and police. We need to have all the supporting infrastructure for them to succeed, not only live and work in our city. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Aya Alzubi. So I want to quickly jump back to a previous question and just mention that I also would want to look into our tree fund and expand how we integrate our school system and district with how we can help our young folks really get more integrated with the science and the art behind climate and also just productively increase our tree canopy as well. As for this question, you'll hear this from Dan Taunton later in a panel as well. I recommend one of the biggest assets we have in addressing this, especially with housing, is regulating our biotech and commercial development. Um, as we regulate, we do need to be conscientious that if there is, if there are these developments, that they are climate conscious and this goes back to an earlier question that was asked. And that they don't make their way into the soul of our city, which is Central Square. Another part of this conversation, I think, really goes back to these institutions once again. Um, Harvard and MIT especially. Harvard prides itself in pushing for more climate consciousness, but has barely made progress on these steps, steps. MIT, I'll cut them a little bit of slack, they're doing better than Harvard. Um, after all, Harvard can invest into an interstate, Austin I ninety for up to ninety million dollars and help the gentrification and increase the land cost of that area. But they can't give much money back to our city. Right now, our fiscal twenty twenty four budget for this year currently has them budgeted out Harvard and MIT at eight million dollars, which is not even one percent of our budget. These institutions need to do a lot more in our community and as someone who's been a part of Harvard's institution, I recognize that they'll give you the pretty face and say that they have these buses that are climate conscious, but there's a lot more that we can do, especially to holding them to a higher standard in our community. And that ties into housing in particular. Um, with Harvard's pilot agreement up for renewal next year, um, this is something that we can push on for them because this was created in the nineties and early two thousands. Thanks.
Uh, in our city, we're dealing with multiple crises and they are not in silos, housing and climate. Uh, you know that our how, our housing list is over twenty, our waitlist for affordable housing units is over twenty thousand uh people and we know that uh six thousand either live or work in Cambridge. Simultaneously, we also know that we are seeing a lot of new buildings being built. One of the things that I would advocate to maybe address this here is to ensure that we protect open space. We have about, uh, the city has over eighty parks, open space, et cetera. I think we need to maintain that and we don't, we don't need to necessarily sacrifice that in the name of more commercialized development. Uh, and the other thing is that we should ensure that community processes are involved and communities where buildings are being built and constructed, neighbors have a say in this building and the construction. Uh, particularly underserved communities, particularly uh environmental justice communities. Because we know that environmental justice communities have traditionally been underserved uh and redlined and left behind. Essentially, I think that we're going to be a city uh that sets the trend for the rest of the nation to follow and to be inclusive, diverse and live out our values of diversity, equ- equity and inclusion. We need to ensure that as these projects and commercial buildings are being built, that it is not overstepping the environmental protections in our city. Uh, and I think it's going to take a process, it's going to take a process of communities being involved and having a seat at the table and voice welcomed at the table, uh, particularly with developers and developers thinking about community benefits agreement. So if developers are going to build more commercial space, which we see, then we ought to ensure that we have a robust community of benefits agreement that include adding additional green space so we can uh reduce our footprint.
You're a shoe against, thanks for the order, I love you too. Uh, so I, you know, I think this, this uh, this is a pretty complicated question to be fair, and I don't, I don't think I'll be able to really answer everything in two minutes, but I'll do my best. First of all, I would echo uh most of my candidate colleagues' uh uh statements. I do want to say that I know Doug contracted a position from nurses, teachers and all these professions.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. As a physician, I am, I'm not going to lie to you. We, I know, I know, I know most people feel that physicians are pretty well off. Uh, and I'm not going to say I'm poor, I I I'm not going to lie, but none of my colleagues, including myself, come to Cambridge and say, ah, this is nothing, let's buy a house. No one, no one on earth. Back when I was getting training in Cleveland or or Cleveland, Ohio or or Nashville, that was, that was good, you know, like when we come here, no, like we we have to plan. Uh, what I'm trying to say is housing over here, all of you guys know, and I'm not going to, you know, like this is not a secret. It's ridiculously expensive for any profession. Obviously, if you're Bill Gates, it's a different, different thing, but I'm not Bill Gates and I don't think you are, that's why we're all sitting here. So I I think, I think, you know, to answer the question, would I ensure that you, that new construction contains sufficient numbers of affordable units? Yes, I I would. I think that is very important and I, and I echoed uh some of my colleagues saying that, you know, gentrification, I think it's important. I think it's great to to live with a lot of different folks around, different professions, different, different religions. Just diversity, I think that's great. So not only affordable units, but also probably for for middle income people. And then commercial development, I I, I think we do have to, we we have to make them know that they have to be green conscientious, meaning that they can develop, but they have to incorporate that into, into, into uh into their building. So that's my take.
Okay, thank you. So this is the last question for this panel, it's a thirty seconds question and actually we'll start with you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so low income communities and communities of color in Cambridge are more severely affected by the impacts of climate change and fossil fuel problems. Think degraded air quality, rising temperatures and vulnerability to flooding. If elected, what would be your one top priority policy to address these inequities? Thirty seconds.
Thanks for the love, again. Uh, so I would, you know, I think low income communities, they are at a disadvantage for a lot of things, not just mission over here, but a lot more. The one thing I would, I would say that I would prioritize would be I would, I would give them more incentives, I would, I would allocate funding so they can do more things, meaning living situation, green space, all these kinds of stuff. I think it's important to incentivize them to become, say, greener or more environmentally conscious so that, so that they have the means to do it.
Thank you.
Uh, one of the things that I would do is promote resilience. So as the former director of the Communities Responding to Extreme Weather and the current director of Climate Justice and Clean Water Action, uh, my work has centered on the most vulnerable. So essentially what I would push in city council is to work with the public health department and to uh, conduct best practices to stay cool, best practices to stay safe during flooding. So we can ensure that people have the knowledge to say safe during extreme weather and distribute resources such as energy efficient air condition, uh conditions and cooling kits, et cetera. Uh, so that's what I would be pushing.
My name is Aya Alzubi. Oh, I want to say like so many things real quick, but I would probably say the biggest thing is access to green spaces. This is not just a climate justice issue, but this means access for better mental health for a low income community because we know that climate and mental health is a very intersectional issue. I also want to, I want to see how the green jobs plays out, especially with the Green New Deal for our income community because economic justice is climate justice. And also we need to address our CSOs in Cambridge, especially with extreme weather coming in. We're going to see a lot more flooding, so we need to be proactive about the steps we're taking.
Thank you.
I'm Hal Wen, uh, you can find me at votehow.com. Um, well, if I'm elected, uh, I will work really hard on economic development, providing more job opportunities for low income population. I do not believe single purpose, one hundred percent affordable housing building. I I promote uh mixed housing. Uh, I think uh justice needs to be uh corrected by economic development and more opportunities for our low income uh population. Thank you.
Uh, Doug Brown, sorry, lots, lots of things here. I think uh the new climate resilient zoning that we have in place now that we passed this year, I don't think that affordable projects should be exempted from that, I think they should be just as resilient as everything else. I think much of that is being built in floodplains. And so I think as, as was mentioned by Aya, we need to address our CSO issues, that's still an issue, even today after all our work. Um, I think heat is in a rapidly increasing issue. Many of our affordable units don't have air conditioning. Um, and uh, last there, I'd say green jobs, that we, with MIT and Harvard need to be building the workforce for the future. So I'd say ground, ground for council dot com.
Thank you for the question and um, but Ayesha dot com, but Ayesha in the one and three. And so what I would say here is that we definitely need to educate. What's important that we are uh looking at our communities across our city and think about how we can do more, put in more dollars and put our money where our mouth is. In order for Cambridge to be as resourceful and as rich as we are, it needs our people. It's our people who do that and so we cannot leave anyone behind. We know that disproportionately our low income, lack of income communities are mostly impacted by the decisions that are made. Those voices need to be centered and at the table in each and every situation that's involved or they eat them out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. So this is the end of the first panel, we'll have a very quick transition, just two minutes. Um, I would like to thank all the, all the panelists, you can uh stand up and clap as well. I'd like to call the next, uh, members of the next panel, uh, Patty Nolan, Devon Corbina Wheeler. And then five, uh, she can't be here tonight because she's sick, but uh, someone is gonna read her um answers. Carrie Passerella, friends here, Joe Minkler.
Yeah, I nailed it. Thank you so much. I said, we've got lots of Jerry plant people, but I'm concerned about that.
It's insane that the money got there. What's your name? Eric, it's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
Yes.
How are you today?
Not too bad, how about you? Thank you for coming. Nice to meet you.
Rather than reducing their emissions, for example, by wishing to renew resource electricity. What do you think is the most important next step in reducing our city's greenhouse gas emissions? You have one minute first.
Okay, is this on? Okay, so I'm Patty Nolan, I love this question because I love BUDOW because it will get us to where we need to go and help. So I wrote out answers because they gave us this in advance so I can remember what to say. So the next steps are to make sure BUDOW is effective, it does no good if it's not effective. How to make it work, we need to monitor, we need to work with property owners to help them plan and act. The utilities need our help accelerating permits and collaborating on future projects. I've spoken about that with Eversource, we can do it if we work with them, they can do it. We need to create local offsets, which is incredibly exciting and potentially transformative and exists because I proposed it. So seriously, and realize that BUDOW got eight votes only because of my leadership, working collaboratively, pushing hard for feasible yet strong ordinance, bringing stakeholders to the table when the city failed to, recognizing condos should not be included, so we could get to yes. Not easy, it happened because of my approach, my willingness to listen, change, adjust and persist. And we're not done, we need immediately to have a plan with robust, concrete technical assistance and financial assistance money for the future.
Thank you. Uh, so the, uh, now we have a question for uh the newcomers and I want to note that uh a spokesperson for Adrianne Chine is here. Um, Adrianne couldn't join us tonight because she's, she's sick. Uh, so the question for your view is, given that by far the largest amount of greenhouse gas emission in Cambridge comes from buildings, if elected, would you seek to maintain, scale back or expand the scope of the BUDOW emissions reduction policies? And you all have one minute.
Thank you, thank you all for being, uh, coming out tonight, my name is Steven Sabrina Wheeler. Uh, I would work on expanding the scope of the building emissions ordinance. And there are cities that have had building emissions ordinances for a while that we can learn from. Cambridge is often the leader in in a lot of policy areas, but this is a, an area where we don't have to reinvent the wheel and we can learn from cities. Uh, New York is one example that has included types of buildings that are uh not included in our ordinance right now, mid-sized buildings, uh, other types of uses. And we can work on expanding in those areas. Um, I would also like to see us take advantage of federal funding that's available in the Inflation Reduction Act uh to add renewable energy infrastructure to our public buildings. In my day job, I'm the uh New England Governance Director for the Working Families Party and I work with cities across New England. Uh, one of the things we're working on right now in Providence is adding solar panels and heat pumps to public buildings, to schools and libraries. This funding is there in the federal IRA, but we've got to take advantage of it. I would love to see us do that, uh, given another term of the House law.
Hello, I'm Carrie Passerello and I would maintain it. So forty percent of the US uh residents live in areas with unhealthy air due to particle matter and brown level ozone leading to um higher rates of asthma, hospitalization and premature death. And so if elected, I would base my answer and my uh improvements for this uh policy order on a review of the key performance indicators and the impacts and gains in our community. I'd also like to review the cost analysis such as the increased costs for property owners and renters and the businesses from this policy order. But my whole goal would be to make our community cleaner and greener and so thank you so much.
Good evening, mic check. My name is Vanessa, I'm here to represent Adrianne Klein, a first time candidate who was unfortunately unable to be here physically due to a very bad virus and the recommendation of her doctor. a first time candidate who is unfortunately unable to be here physically due to a very bad virus and the recommendation of her doctor. Adrian thought it was important that you all hear her position and her responses, so I'm here representing her as one of her constituents in North Cambridge. As many of you know, Adrian is a dedicated public servant, has been working with the city already, and she has spent her career supporting vulnerable groups, marginalized communities, and oppressed people to act source resources and justice. That includes climate change. To answer the question, Adrian will seek to maintain the scope of BUDOW, maintain the emissions reduction policies, which are ambitious and were already achieved with consensus. She will support the dedication of sufficient technical assistance and funding to ensure that the implementation is feasible and sustainable for all of Cambridge. Thank you.
Okay, so on to the next question of the state pilot. You each have thirty seconds. And we're actually gonna start, well, no, actually, we're gonna start with Patty Nolan again and then we'll switch. Uh, okay, so Cambridge has applied to be one of ten cities allowed by the legislature to pilot a near total ban on the use of fossil fuel infrastructure in new construction. If elected, would you encourage the adoption of these policies for new construction or seek to withdraw Cambridge from the program? And each have thirty seconds. Thank you.
I voted for it. I voted again. I pushed for it. This program is good policy from a sustainability perspective and absolutely feasible today for new construction. My regret is that unlike the state model law in Brookline and other communities, we inexplicably exempted all in restaurants instead of passing my proposal to have any restaurant that couldn't for technical or financial reasons operate all electric. In a five-four vote, had just one more colleague voted yes, we'd be more of a climate leader. Why in this day of extreme climate we would allow any new fossil fuel building is beyond me.
Thank you.
I would also push to adopt this. Uh, and this is an area where, when I, I served a term on the council previously, and at that time, we weren't allowed to do this ourselves. There was a statewide ban. Uh, we would have loved to do this when I was on the, the council of term previously, you know, spent time researching and spent time looking at it. Uh, on day one, I'm ready to, to start working on this and expanding, uh, because new construction should not have to have new fossil fuel infrastructure.
Okay, Carrie Pascarella, and I would have to start off by stating that I'm open to research and innovative ideas. Uh, but being first in this with the, uh, the, the group of ten, it means that we don't have the luxury of analyzing what worked and what didn't work, but that's okay. We're gonna move on. And what I'd like to make sure that we're doing is, is really looking at our urban planning and making sure that we're reviewing where our electric grids and our investment will be going so that we can really do this in a solid way. Thank you.
Adrian fully supports the city's participation in the fossil fuel free demonstration program and the adoption of the state specialized stretch energy code. Again, we need to make sure we're implementing in a way that effectively supports our residents and small businesses. So Adrian is a key, Adrian believes it is key, sorry, that we listen to expertise and city staff to proceed thoughtfully with a plan that achieves our city's net zero action plan priorities.
Thank you. So the next question, buildings is our primary source of emissions, transportation is going as fast as it can to catch up to be number two. After building emissions, transportation, and while there will be increasing numbers of electric vehicles in coming years, many gas-powered cars will remain active and we will continue to have congestion whether they're electric or gas. Our roads are not built to the number of cars we now have running on them. Encouraging safe mobility by foot and bicycle is the most effective method we have for reducing both pollution and congestion. And I would add transit. Yes or no? If elected, reelected, would you support the continuation of the current cycling safety ordinance policy requiring the rapid creation of separated bike lanes and safe pedestrian crossings on all of our major roads? And go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No.
Thank you. Uh, Adrian supports continued investment in infrastructure that will allow us to add density on par with the last ten years without increasing greenhouse emissions. So she supports continued building near transit, which will allow city to create needed units housing to our growing population. She also is an avid walker and cyclist with a young child in Cambridge and is all for pedestrian inclusion on this, including transit. She signed the bicycle safety pledge and she supports many of the plans for pedestrian bridges and multi-use paths from the Grand Junction multi-use path to the pedestrian and bicycle crossing at Pittsburgh in North Cambridge.
Okay, I would, I, I would base my answer on the transportation and utilization study that we really need to have. When it comes to yes or no, it's a no plus a yes because I know we have a better innovative way that we can do our bike lanes that literally could make, uh, our community, um, really stellar. And that would be elevated bike lanes with possibly, uh, solar panels on top. I mean, that, we could be so much more innovative with, with, uh, our bike lanes here in, in Cambridge. And so that's what I'd like to see happen.
Yes, I would support the cycling safety ordinance. I was the city councillor who introduced the twenty twenty cycling safety ordinance, so hopefully it's not a surprise. Um, I'll be honest, I didn't start out as a huge cyclist in Cambridge, but I lived on one side of Harvard Square, I worked on the other, and it made no sense to sit in traffic to try to get there. Uh, but it felt incredibly dangerous to bike. Since we've added protected bike lanes to Mass Ave and Hampton Street, I've talked to so many folks who've started biking for the first time, who, you know, didn't like, uh, having to sit in traffic before, but are starting to feel safer. And as we complete the network, we're gonna see more people feel comfortable. We're gonna see fewer cars on the road, so we need to finish the network.
So I support the CSO. I voted for it. And I also recognize the implementation has been deeply flawed and all stakeholders are not at the table and didn't feel invited. I encourage all to review the statement on bike lanes on my website, pattymullen.org. We need the CSO. We need a complete network. We also need to monitor the impact. So far, no decrease in car usage has happened despite an increase in bike usage huge in some parts of the city. And still a very small number of residents rely on bikes. So hesitant cyclists will use it. We need to complete it, but we need more, especially during winter months. We need electric bus shuttles and more cyclists.
Thank you. So on to, uh, tree canopy. So our tree canopy doesn't significantly reduce the city's carbon footprint, however, does strengthen our climate change resilience by lowering air temperature and absorbing pollution. But the tree canopy is notably thin in areas of a city occupied by low income families. The city's tree canopy master plan contains numerous suggestions for both improving the overall number of trees and decreasing the current inequities. Which of its suggestions would you prioritize for funding and implementation? This is a one minute question, and we'll start again with Adrian's final suggestion.
Um, Adrian is dedicated to finding ways to keep energy, um, contained in our green tree canopy. She would like to prioritize some of the design suggestions in the city's tree canopy master plan, like increasing our tree canopy on city-owned land, primarily public parks and street trees. And she suggests working with homeowners to plant more trees by providing positive incentives. Adrian is a huge fan of the Danahe Park Miyawaki Forest and would like to see another planned for. For those who don't know, this is a concentrated, high-density tree area in the middle of a park that just creates more carbon sequestration. Adrian also feels it is important to focus on native species for trees and other plants and would like to prioritize tree canopy efforts in the port, in Cambridge Port and East Cambridge as a climate justice issue. Finally, Adrian wants to note our phosphorus control plan calls for tree box filters and rain gardens, and would like to better understand where these, being incorporated across the city, are called for in the port preparedness plan.
So I'd have to say, we have to start off with a care plan. We have so many trees here in Cambridge that are suffering. We have trees that aren't being taken care of. We have, uh, gators that are on trees and, uh, neighbors don't know what the gators are for. We need more education. We need more experts. I think we should have some type of tree warden that's, uh, that's in addition to our arborist so that we're taking care of the plants that we're planting, that we're taking care of the trees once we plant them. There are too many that are dying out there, and we need to make sure that we're educating our community on how to take action, how to plant more trees, how to take care of them, because we do need these, these trees to, uh, improve our uh, environmental justice for, for Cambridge. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, just to preface the same story, I think sometimes we talk about environmental issues as if they're separate from economic issues or racial justice issues, but really they're all the same issue because the folks who are gonna be most impacted by climate change are the same people who are economy is failing, are the same people, uh, who have been left out because of, uh, their race or their ethnicity. You can see it particularly in our tree canopy. One of our, uh, neighborhoods that has the, the least tree canopy, tree canopy is the port, which is uh, one of the more working-class neighborhoods, one of the most racially diverse neighborhoods. The recommendation in the master plan that I would love to see us push forward with is redesigning streets and sidewalks to make room for trees. My partner is a landscape architect, so this is something we think about a lot as we're walking around the city. We have a great walking city. We have a lot of relatively narrow sidewalks, uh, that we can expand and add trees to. A great example of this is Memorial Drive. Right now, there's a, a four-lane highway and just this narrow little strip of sidewalk. We can expand Memorial Drive Land. It's a great plan to expand tree canopy there, expand the sidewalk there, integrate a, a more holistic, uh, space that has, is a part of the result.
Thanks. If you haven't read it, the Urban Forestry Master Plan is an incredible document. It's available on the website. It's really terrific. And it's an important part of our city's plan. In fact, I had hosted a meet, or chaired a meeting of the Health and Environment Committee meeting specifically on that earlier this year. There are presentations which you can all get online from the city, but also by Cambridge Trees, the Committee on Public Planting, biodiversity folks. In order for us to really think about how it is that we can improve things and push us all to follow the plan and monitor it. And as Jiven said, this really is an environmental justice issue when you think about the tree canopy. There's so much to be done and improved upon, and the community can help our urban forest. We need more resources for our urban forest. Green Cambridge has mapped out lots of areas for more planting. We, the Committee on Public Planting has come forward with specific recommendations. The, every sidewalk should already, we have space on so many of our sidewalks already for increasing the planting of trees wherever possible. And that's exactly in the parts of the city that don't have it now. Um, and Linear Park is an example. IQ and Jer, IQ HQ, Jer's pond, the Miyawaki Forest and Rose Green Park. Oh my gosh. I missed that last five seconds.
Yeah, uh, thank you all. And, uh, I'm gonna ask the, uh, the last question here of environmental justice.
What about land use?
I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. This is the big question, which is why maybe we need to deal with it twice. Yeah. So Cambridge is experiencing intense development of both housing and commercial space. What controls event, the Ozmont already did, would you put on development to ensure that new construction contains sufficient numbers of affordable units? And that commercial development does not overwhelm city's environmental protection infrastructure, understanding that that development is a lot of what pays for the resources and services we now are paid for providing. So I'm gonna start with you, Patty. And each have two minutes, lots of time. It's an essay.
So it's about development. So the Finch building on Concord Ave is a hundred percent affordable and built to passive house standards. And the construction costs were twenty to thirty percent less than the expected cost per unit of Jefferson Park. That gives us all hope that we can do this. Ailwye zoning overall is an example that showcases how to get things done, and I was very proud to play the leadership role there. For forty years, we talked about ailwye zoning, nothing happened. I put forth a moratorium, the M word. It was very controversial. It was bold. It passed. And then the work happened. City staff and the community came together. The council provided inspiration and conditions. We brought stakeholders to the table, set a timeline. This all ties into development because the zoning that happened, which is now in place, has housing that will be forty percent. Otherwise, it could have been all LAS. That housing will be twenty percent affordable. It'll be mixed-use retail, commercial, and LAS to address the question of commercial development overwhelmingly. There will be a bridge over the tracks and hopefully a commuter rail stop at ailwye to link to the red line and bring workers and allow residents to use public transit. That area is in a floodplain. The other new zoning we passed on climate resilience is in place and will lead to a far better place. There's an EverSource substation there that will be key to future electrification. So ailwye for me serves as a model for exactly what we're talking about. And green spaces in the plan as well. So with development continuing, we need all the large players, Harvard, MIT, biotech, to work with us to provide housing for our students and low-income salary workers. Biotech, workforce housing, we need to work regionally also. Anytime a zoning is required, we can and should do what we did in ailwye. Take a comprehensive look, ensure that our vision guides the zoning. We also need to include green space and pay attention to the true cost of buildings. So as we develop, we don't make the problem of emission pollution worse. That's why the green roofs ordinance is so important, and it can and should happen with solar roofs and sides. That is why the, um, fossil fuel free thing is also really critical. That's it.
Yeah, uh, I am, I'm super interested in land use policy for a long time, so I was interested to answer this question. Uh, before I started on the, my first term on my council, I worked with environmental programs at the Lincoln Institute of Land Policy in Cambridge, uh, and was part of what inspired me to run for council at first. I'm really interested in the, the balance of housing and commercial and, uh, environmental space in Cambridge. I would love to see us encourage housing in parts of the city, uh, that currently have very little, like Kendall and ailwye, and add green infrastructure and amenities to help those, uh, areas feel more like neighborhoods and more connected to the rest of the city. And the, the green space is a big part of that. And there's also policies we can do to, uh, incentivize conversion from office space to housing, which will help with affordability. Boston, the zoning had incentives of work from home as office spaces aren't being used to housing. I also think it's really important to think about all the emissions that are generated when people are priced out of the city and then have to commute back in. If you are a teacher or if you're a custodian and you can't afford to live in Cambridge and you have to move a half hour, forty-five minutes away and then drive back into the city, that's generating a lot of it, emissions. And we may not always count those emissions because, uh, you aren't a Cambridge resident. Uh, you're not, you know, uh, in a, living in a place that, that, uh, is Cambridge. We're absolutely responsible for those emissions of our housing policy and our economic policy, or pricing people out of the city and then forcing them to drive back in. So, uh, housing policy, economic policy are also climate policy, and I think it's really important to, to consider them holistically.
So I've lived in some of the most diverse and dense communities in the world. I've lived in Milan, in Rome, in Bangkok, in San Diego. And so when I look at Cambridge, I know how difficult it is to live here. The costs are extreme. And I understand why people wanna move here because we're so innovative and spectacular community. And so I, I appreciate the, uh, the ability to build new homes so that people can move here. I love the diversity. I love the fact that people are working so hard to get more people to be able to come. And I also appreciate the fact that people are looking after the environmental justice side of, of trying to plan for more green space. But what it comes down to is making sure that we have an urban plan. We have to have a comprehensive plan for Cambridge. So as we're going forward, we understand where our electric grids are going to be. We need to know where this new housing is going to be. We need to know that our infrastructure will support what we want to bring. And so this is exactly, uh, you know, the planning, the forethought that needs to be in place now. So I think making sure that we're, uh, strategizing that plan forward will be a very important first step to make sure our vision will be good for Cambridge. Thank you.
Again, Adrian, um, believes we need to make investments that address our twin crisis of climate and housing affordability. And you addressed this well. And I think the city's been on the right track with a lot of the projects you mentioned. Um, Cambridge is indeed gonna need more housing, and by increasing housing density, we can reduce sprawl and traffic congestion, make more efficient use of the areas we do already live in, um, building up rather than out primarily. And we could also plan strategically to add, to advance multiple goals. So for example, by using urban infill in order to balance green spaces with other urban use spaces. Um, Adrian, Adrian believes that Cambridge would be providing pleasant places for people to live, green businesses, and a more environmentally friendly neighborhood in general, more desirable Cambridge overall. Urban infill is one of the many tools that Cambridge, um, needs and that Adrian feels the city could use to improve and address these issues. She supports in current, sorry, current inclusionary housing provisions, which require developments of ten or more units to allocate twenty percent of residential floor area for low and moderate income tenants or moderate and middle income home buyers. And she also wants to increase these opportunities for homeownership through deed restricted units. Adrian is actively following the Central Square City Lots Study because she would like to see the city purchasing additional properties as an investment and then allowing development on that land while retaining rights to the first floor. This allows for innovative future programming that could support small businesses. Understanding how the city is currently utilizing and planning for city-owned properties in Central Square sets a really strong precedent for Cambridge as a, an example of a wider municipal property uh, needs assessment and planning study for other city-owned properties. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, um, last question for this panel. Uh, it's a thirty seconds question and we'll start. Uh, it's a thirty seconds question, and we'll start with Adrian's. I'm the speaker.
Thank you.
So low-income communities and musical color in Cambridge are more severely affected by the impact of climate change in our fossil fuel economy. Think degraded air quality, rising temperatures, and vulnerability to flooding. If elected, what would be your one top priority policy to address these inequities? You all have thirty seconds.
Adrian currently lives in subsidized housing with her biracial bilingual family in North Cambridge where there is a lot of affordable housing. Adrian believes the goal of the AHO, to spread the development of affordable housing across the city, which would in turn spread the risk of severe climate change, should be our top priority. We should keep continuing to work toward that goal. Additionally, Adrian Klein will be focusing efforts to increase resistance, sorry, resilience in at-risk areas like the port and ailwye with focused expansion of the canopy. Please go to Adrian dot com to learn more.
So forty percent of the US live in areas where there's unhealthy air. And this is a true environmental justice issue. And I think first we have to stop and identify and really bring transparency and some acknowledgement to these issues where um, environmental justice issues are occurring, which are uh, housing that's by highways and other sources of pollution. And so I want to make sure that we're trying to identify.
Sorry, only thirty seconds.
Thank you. My name is Jiven Sabrina Wheeler. This is a big question. I talked before about tree canopy and land use. So I want to take a second and talk about improving public transit. And this is a great example of an economic justice issue, a racial justice issue, and an environmental justice issue. We know that people who take the bus are disproportionately likely to be uh, racial minorities, disproportionately likely to be low income. And if we can uh, make it easier to take the bus, we're going to reduce emissions. Uh, fare free is a great example here where uh, by not having to pay as you get the bus, it speeds up the bus, also gets money in people's pockets, and it's going to improve racial and uh, and economic justice.
So we know the climate crisis disproportionately affects environmental justice communities. We've already talked about some heat islands, tree canopy, decarbonization. So specific policies I'm working on, funding for low and moderate income residents, a climate fund, pay for energy efficiency, decarbonize heat pumps, electric stoves, protect and increase the tree canopy, treat it as the infrastructure it is. To care about people is to care about trees. I'm excited that an environmental justice success is about to happen, phasing out gas-powered lawn equipment for residents and for workers with permanent hearing and language because of my work over the last year.
Okay, so a big round of applause. And again, we'll have a quick transition, and we're gonna have our last uh, flash of candidates. Please join us at a, at the analyst table, so we can try to finish on time. So I should say that Joe McGovern had a conflict and couldn't be with us tonight, as well. Mark McGovern can't be here tonight because he had an emergency uh, concerning his mother. And um, so Mosey said she was gonna try to join us uh, for this last panel, so she might um, arrive. But I think we should get started. Um, and we will start, I will start with the first question. So I suggest that before you answer your question, you may, you may decide to stand up or not. And you state your name because people in the back of the room can't read your names. So um, so I will start with a question for our incumbent on the panel, and then the, the newcomers will get a different question. So nearly, uh, this is an incumbent question. Nearly eighty percent of Cambridge's greenhouse gas emissions come from buildings. And most of that is generated by large institutional and commercial buildings. In June, you voted to amend the building energy use disclosure ordinance, requiring large commercial and institutional buildings to begin gradually reducing their emissions, for example, by switching to renewable source electricity. What do you think is the most important next step in reducing our city's greenhouse gas emissions? And this is the one minute that you please.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Tom Hahn of Dene. Uh, I'm your city councillor, and as the youngest person on this stage, it's also funny to be the incumbent. Um, so I appreciate you guys all having me here today. So we passed a bill that would require all large buildings a hundred thousand square feet or above, uh, which are commercial, to be net zero by twenty thirty-five. I think it's historic. It's much more ambitious than Boston or other places have done. Um, I actually think that work is not done in that it's easy to pass legislation, but as I think we'll talk about later with other people's bills, we actually have to make sure that it gets implemented, and that's going to require a lot of monitoring and that the fee mechanism and all sorts of other places really have to work out and people have to do it. And so I think there's still work there. And then the second is I don't think that, you know, uh, for difference of opinion a little bit, we didn't really get to do housing, but I really would want to go to both, you know, homeowner and rental units together and really focus on those next and try to go to the next.
Thank you. And now um, uh, the same questions are for newcomers. So given that by far the largest amount of greenhouse gas emissions in Cambridge comes from buildings, if elected, would you seek to maintain, scale back, or expand the scope of the BUDO emissions reduction policies? And you all have one minute, and I suggest that you state your name before you answer.
Um, my name is Greg Maury, electgregmaury dot com, and the answer that he gives. Um, all these buildings and all these institutions that we have, they have to reduce climate, climate. They can't. Emissions go up in the air and it's dirty, and if they have to meet the standard, they have to meet the standard. Um, we have OSHA. OSHA would monitor a lot of this with uh, superintendents and the superintendent and the building superintendent, and we'll resolve it. The answer is yes on that question. Thank you.
Hello, Federico, federicoforcouncil dot net, and uh, the answer is absolutely yes. Uh, and I think what I am gathering from BUDO is that it uh, requires a great deal of civic engagement, which is what you're all doing tonight, which is so wonderful. And uh, just if I could get a show of hands, raise your hand if you are a homeowner. Hmm, can't leave too. So, so, so you've got your work cut out for you. Um, I'm looking at the FAQs on the BUDO page uh, about how to set up a portal and what questions you need to go through and how to set up accounts and so on and so forth. You really need to do this, folks. It's important. This is data. It's like putting your building on a Fitbit in sense, as well as doing other things. It's data the city can use down the road to help us become more efficient, but be apprised, you have to be involved. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dan Totten. I'm a queer renter. I live down the street. I'm really proud of the work that I did as councillor Zondervan's aide over a period of years to pass the Green New Deal for Cambridge, which is the strongest climate legislation of any municipality in the country, including a green jobs component to help our youth get into high-paying green jobs. So the answer is, I would, I wouldn't touch it. There's a lot of stuff I would do to keep moving forward on climate, but I wouldn't touch the Green New Deal for Cambridge that we passed, including with many of you in the room. We built a very strong coalition. It took years of work. Um, the Mothers Out Front, Three Fifty, Sunrise. In fact, I'm the only candidate in the race endorsed by Sunrise Cambridge, which is the youth movement, climate movement in our city, uh, because they recognize the, the strength that I brought to this issue and the deep technical knowledge that I have from learning from Quinton Zondervan, who is the most knowledgeable person on climate change I've ever met in my life. I've learned so much from him over six years, and I want to continue that on the city council. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joan Pickett, and I'm sitting down because my knees are hurting at the moment. So um, I know you'll uh, grant me a, a givi for that one. So as it relates to these issues, we have passed three very important climate solutions in a very short period of time. The stretch code was adopted, BUDO, and then the fossil fuel. So as we look at this particular BUDO, I think that the implementation of this is really going to be critical. And at this point, I would not suggest that we do anything other than continue to move forward, but it's going to be complicated. And I like to say with my background in planning and business development and municipal finance, I've dealt with a lot of complicated issues before, and I look forward to being on the council to deal with this particular issue. At the moment, I think we should maintain where we are and move forward with a successful implementation.
Hi. Hi, I'm Kathy, I'm Kathy Zuski, and I support uh, BUDO and expand, we need to expand it to labs. I think that's the next step. And we should consider doing a geothermal pilot in Cambridge. Um, HEAT is now doing one in Framingham. They'll be doing one in Lowell. And I understand that Swatpor and Kirsten are both also exploring geothermal. Um, as a new candidate, I'm coming up to speed in this area, so please be a little generous tonight. Um, I am very proud of Cambridge's leadership in climate. Um, we were one of the early adopters of, in Massachusetts, of becoming a green community. And then I'm proud that we um, that we voted in BUDO, BUDO, the stretch code, the net zero action plan. Um, we, we've gotta reduce our emissions by twenty fifteen, get to net zero. It's absolutely essential. And half the, half the, half the cities in the country are doing this, so it's essential, and if we can't do it.
Thank you, thank you. So another question for me is on the state pilots. And it's the same question for all of you, and you have thirty seconds to answer. So Cambridge has applied to be one of ten cities allowed by the legislature to pilot a near total ban on the use of fossil fuel infrastructure in new construction. If elected, would you encourage the adoption of these policies for new construction or seek to withdraw Cambridge from the program? You all have thirty seconds. And you starting with thirteen.
Um, considering I voted for it, hopefully uh, that's a decent question. Um, I think that it's really important, and I think it can sound scary, but new construction is probably the easier construction to make fossil free. Um, I think especially for housing, you know, a lot of our public housing developers have said that energy use goes down after they build it fossil free. So there's a higher upfront cost, but over the long term, you save a lot of money, and I'm excited for us to join the program, and I think that will do a lot of great work.
I, I would say yes to that question as well. I'm a union co-founder. We build buildings, all container shops steward. Um, build smart buildings. That's what I do for a living. So I would say yes on that question. Thank you.
Uh, I have to plead some degree of ignorance here. I haven't looked at the particularities. That's my honest, the God truth to you guys. But uh, I believe that there is a good intent behind it, and I would, I would endorse it. Um, it sounds like a good plan. Yes.
Yeah, so this was another thing that I worked on when I was councillor Zondervan's aide at City Hall. Um, it wasn't ever a guarantee that we were going to get this done, and that we were going to be one of the ten communities in the pilot. Um, and it actually took filing a home rule petition. Um, uh, and our state rep Mike Connolly was a superhero, and when nobody else would file it, I'm not going to name names, but when nobody else would file it, Mike Connolly stood up, filed it, and got us in that pilot. I'm so proud to be part of it, and we're a climate leader in Cambridge, and that's a good thing.
Okay, so maybe it wasn't a choice on this list. It was either yes or no. I completely agree with the idea that new construction should be fossil free, and that's something that we can do. There's another part of this ordinance, however, that speaks to major renovations and what happens with major renovations and the need to convert. I want to understand more about that because if a home, it needs to convert and they already have a good gas system and air conditioning, are we asking them to take that out and replace it? So I feel I need a little bit more information on the second part of that question, but I support the new construction a hundred percent.
I think we should uh, stay as part of the fossil fuel demonstration project. Um, I will tell you, um, what really convinced me that that was the right thing to do was attending the Kendall Square Business Association fifteenth anniversary celebration last week, where I learned we got two major federal grants. We're going to get hundreds of millions of dollars to build ships here. And we just got, we're going to get like a billion dollars for an ARPA-H funded health, um, um, healthcare development project. So again, we come forward to do the right thing right here in Cambridge.
Okay, thank you Mayor Zizzi for joining us. I'm asking a question on the state pilot. Are you ready? Can I ask you a question? Okay, so I'm gonna read to you. You have thirty seconds. Cambridge has applied to be one of ten cities allowed by the legislature to pilot a near total ban on the use of fossil fuel infrastructure in new construction. If elected, would you encourage the adoption of these policies for new construction or seek to withdraw Cambridge from the program? And you have thirty seconds.
Sure, and I apologize for being late. Uh, absolutely, you know, I was involved with this current council, really pushed to be a part of the pilot. Um, you know, I do recognize that it um, exempts uh, large uh, labs. And um, I think that's something we need to think about and tie in the scientific research facilities as well. So um, there are some carve-outs that have been made. Uh, there's compromise involved, but I'm very supportive and want us to be a part of it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming. We uh, in addition to buildings, which is our number one source of emissions in Cambridge, number two is transportation. And uh, so the question involves non-motorized travel and transit. After building emissions, the second largest source is cars burning fossil fuels. While there will be increasing numbers of electric vehicles in coming years, many gas-powered cars will remain active, and whether they're electric or gas congestion will continue to increase because we simply have more cars and our roads are capable of handling. Encouraging safe mobility by foot, bicycle, and transit is the most effective method we have for reducing both pollution and congestion. So if elected or re-elected, would you support the continuation of the current cycling safety ordinance policy requiring the rapid creation of separated bike lanes and safe pedestrian crossings on all our major roads? We'll start again with you.
Thank you. Um, so I do support the cycling safety ordinance. I know it can be difficult and there's a lot of conversations to be had around there. I will also say that, you know, imagine every bicyclist you see is a car, and you know, it's like a really, really congested network. And so there are trade-offs that we have to make there. I'll say a point that is left out is that I share the transportation committees. I work really closely with the MBTA, and we're actually going to get a thirty-five percent increase in bus service. And that was like a longer partnership, and the MBTA did not do that with any other cities. So I think that shows a lot of willingness that we can have with the MBTA when they base them.
Uh, I'm willing, I do support the bike lanes because it supports safety. Safety is a big one. Uh, we can't have anybody getting run over by a Uber driver or somebody, you know, or a Mack truck. So we support bike lanes, um, try to save as many parking spots as we can possible, makes sense. Um, we support mini buses, so mini buses that we have. And some of these buildings, maybe the employees can keep their car home, and just take the MBTA, it would be so much better for us.
Thank you. Good morning.
Yeah, so Federico, uh, I'll just try and run down the list of inventory of ideas here. Um, obviously, I'm not the first one to talk about electric buses, uh, but I would say half-size electric buses and double the fleet so that they're a little bit more agile. Uh, I bike everywhere. Uh, I support the bike lanes. I did not sign the pledge. Uh, I support the Van Junction multi-path, uh, multi-use path. And I believe the Minuteman Bike Path should be marked up for pedestrians and bicyclists so that we can reorient folks. And lastly, I believe the Courtesy of Cambridge campaign. Thank you.
Yeah, so uh, I am very proud to assign the bike pledge. I agree with the notion that we need to reduce car usage uh, as a, as a climate issue. It's also a safety issue. I just don't want my friends to get hurt or die. Uh, that's the bottom line, but I also recognize that there are a lot of folks who can't or aren't interested in using the bike lanes. And so I support a municipal shuttle network, similar to what Newton is doing, that would offer free or low-cost rides to um, to folks who are trying to get around the city, especially seniors and people with disabilities, um, so we can be inclusive of everybody.
Thank you. I know, you all know, I've been on this issue for following this issue, issue for two years. And it's important for me to state that separated bike lanes by themselves are not going to solve the issue that we have at hand. We are going to have to look broadly at how we develop a transportation plan. In the short term, what I'm seeing on the streets is an increase in congestion, not a lessening of congestion. So I think we need to pause the implementation, take a look and reevaluate what is happening on our streets as a community, which did not happen before, and then we can move forward from there. Thank you.
Yes, I will support the building of more safe bike lanes and a network of them. But I'll encourage the city to take the time it needs to roll them out right. I, I fear that, that we've been rolling them out so quickly that there hasn't been time to work out the kinks, and clearly they, there's room for improvement. I also would encourage the city and the Bicycle Safety Committee to really evaluate and analyze the feedback that's come in about the bike lanes and to modify and improve them as required. to really evaluate and analyze the feedback that's come in about the bike lanes and to modify and improve them as required.
Very much.
I definitely support um, the continued implementation, and you know, I hear the feedback, and I think uh, it's important to listen and think about some of the things that with some of our bike lanes and mitigation that could have happened um, uh, to, to make people just more comfortable. Uh, one thing I'm excited about also next term to hopefully continue working on is how to provide e-bikes and ride-a-boat system, because we have to enable and incentivize people to use e-bikes then as well. It's not gonna happen overnight, so.
Okay, uh, the microphone because we're gonna start from here now. Okay, so next question on our tree canopy. So our tree canopy doesn't significantly reduce the city's carbon footprint. However, it does strengthen our climate change resilience by lowering the air temperature and absorbing pollution. But the tree canopy is notably thin in areas of the city occupied by low-income families. The city's tree canopy master plan contains numerous suggestions for both improving the overall number of trees and decreasing the quarantine equities. Which of its, of its suggestions would you prioritize for funding and implementation? And you all have one minute.
Sure, uh, trees are so important, and uh, you know, I remember years ago, then we were working on the Trees Protection Ordinance. Some folks were unhappy about that, but because of that, um, we've been able to keep so many of our trees safe. I think planting a thousand street tea trees um, eh, each year uh, is one priority that I think we need to invest in. I think making sure that we're planting in parks um, is really important. And so those are, I think, the, the two top priorities, I think. We, we have participatory budgeting every uh, year, and the number one issue is we want more trees. So I think whatever we can do to um, fast-track and, 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 and make sure we're planting new trees and then keeping the old ones. I think we should also help uh, our affordable housing developers, uh, and we do have a tree fund, and I'm interested in seeing how that's uh, you know, that's been going. Uh, let's help uh, people keep trees, um, and so uh, our tree canopy is not even further reduced. Thank you.
I was assuming that we're gonna continue the planting a thousand trees a year, something that I think we need to continue to do. And I know we in Cambridge has been planning another four hundred trees in East Cambridge, which is fabulous, because that's in the area where we have a lot of trees. Um, so other suggestions I prioritize from looking at the Urban Forest Master Plan are designing streets to make more room for trees. I know the committee on public planting came up with sort of some optimum specifications for planting street trees, but they haven't been followed. Um, we need to expand our data collection for tree health and to improve resiliency. We need to make sure we're watering the trees. I know we're working on that. We really need to engage stakeholders and students perhaps in planting. Uh, maybe there should be a memorial tree project. Um, and we should add an, a landscape architect to the pending board. This was part of the Urban Forest Master Plan. That seems like a great idea to me. And we should have a yearly report card that, um, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, there are some people that think that their urban forest master plan should be in ordinance so that it has much more attention than it has now, and we can measure and look at the metrics associated with how we're implementing it. I think one of the first things we need to do as a community is preserve the trees that we have. Make sure that they stay healthy. And as the city looks at its projects, removing trees should be the lowest of priorities. If they're looking at a particular project, there's one in particular linear park, and there's been some others on River Street where healthy mature trees are being taken down. And I would say that that is something that we should not allow to have happen if we truly believe in the Urban Forest Master Plan. It's my time over. Okay, but we do need, I have five seconds. I'll give that back. I'll let Dan have his five seconds.
All right, yeah, so um, not to be a broken record, but I'm really proud of the work that I did as Quinton's aide. We tripled the tree planting budget. We got the tree protection ordinance done that the mayor mentioned. It's made a big difference, but uh, the thing that I want us to do is I want us to be more intentional about um, planting trees in the neighborhoods like the Port and Wellington Heritage where it's really hard to do that. Um, we had some constituents on Plymouth Street who asked us for some street trees, and when we emailed the city, they said no. And then we said to the city, hey, we wanna come out and take a walk along Plymouth Street with you. We, we got together with the, with the neighbors and with the um, the arborists and people from the city, and we actually identified six locations on Plymouth Street in a very narrow stretch that we planted new saplings on, and I'm really proud of that, and I think it speaks to the fact that the city is not actually, actually doing the work that it will take to get trees planted on these narrow streets. They're saying, oh, it's too narrow. Let's, let's focus somewhere else. But those narrow tree streets are the places we need to focus the hardest, and so I would, that would be the thing I would switch, is the emphasis on where we're planting.
So I, I think the uh, folks that designed that tree decker a hundred and twenty years ago to align with the canopy did it on purpose. It's a beautiful alignment between uh, you know, building elevation and the canopy. And I think that that's really why people come uh, to Cambridge. Um, I also uh, uh, happen to have the uh, plan here in front of me, and you've asked me to pick two or three items. I would say prepare and implement soil management plan. Plant a thousand street trees per year, maximize uh, tree planting in existing parks, uh, and reform zoning tools. Uh, and um, and so uh, the last thing I would do is I would teach environmentalism to kindergarteners by implementing what I call a tree spur tops. And where every incoming kindergartner has a tree assigned to them, and they get to track the progress of that tree over the course of its life. So that the city will not chop that tree down. But uh, canopies are really big in my um, housing platform. Thank you.
Um, trees. So I would ta, I like trees. Everybody likes trees. You got an idea that you, you want a tree in your yard, or I'll find them, and you just write a letter right into the, to the mayor over there that you want a tree. And uh, we're gonna say yes to the tree, and we love trees, and we're gonna make sure they're watered. Make sure they get plenty of water. They need some more uh, trees. I, yes, we support trees.
So, uh, they're, they're right, yeah. Um, so I think that we definitely need a lot more trees, especially in our east Cambridge and north Cambridge neighborhoods, where we have a lot fewer than in other parts. Um, and I think that maintaining our trees, a lot of trees dry due to the droughts and places that are really preventable. Um, and I would also add that it goes both ways. The question was like, in our low-income areas or where we have a lot of low-income residents, we have fewer trees, and that's also kind of intentional, in that we allow houses to be built in less desirable areas, where also the areas with less trees. And part of getting towards like housing justice is to allow more people to live in areas that have really nice parks and trees and great environmental concerns. So I think that the question kind of goes both ways as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we're gonna get to an easy question. Development and land. As you know, Cambridge is experiencing intense development of both housing and commercial space. It's part of what pays for all the services that we provide in our school. But what controls, if any, beyond what already exists, would you put on development to ensure that new construction contains sufficient numbers of affordable units? And that commercial development does not overwhelm the city's environmental protection infrastructure? And I think we'll start again with the mayor over on that side. Sorry.
Oh, gosh.
And a good news in two minutes, because.
I don't think I'll need to read it. I, this is a hard one. I, I, I will say that uh, there is a model that exists that the council, you know, recently underwent, which was the L-Wife Moratorium. Shout out to Patty. Um, you know, we worked, all worked together and said, you know, you know, most of us did. We said, let's plan this right. And I think the L-Wife Moratorium um, let us think about zoning, uh, that incorporated uh, a really excellent urban design. Uh, making sure that, that we were going to have open space, and I think in any new construction, how are we thinking about open space? How are we thinking about our tree canopy? Um, they, those things shouldn't be an afterthought, and so I think um, it's okay to pause and be really intentionable, intentional, and ask developers to do more, right? I think if you look at our history, um, we've said, yes, 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 yes. Um, and not really ask for as much as I think we should have been asking in the last uh, twenty years. Uh, and I think uh, pushing for more uh, environmental standards, you know, uh, i- i- is really key to that work. So I think with the development, um, we've had, you know, I think this council, prior councils, affordability and warm-over-use uh, is really important, and with the new L-Wife zoning, I think that's, that's uh, an example um, of what we can use in the future processes. I will say there's not much more land that we have. Um, uh, and so I think that's another issue. I think we, uh, you know, we've done so much development um, that there, there really not much, uh, you know, I think we'll have to really uh, think about um, that in the future. Uh, so I'll stop there. It's a tough question, but I do think we had a great example from this last term.
We need to balance growth with our infrastructure, including our natural infrastructure. Um, I think most of our affordable housing will be built on city land, and that may include land that we purchase. Uh, with greater density, we need um, more and more amenities, and that includes reopen spaces that provide mental and physical um, well-being for all of us. Uh, we need to, but they also provide resilience, absorb heat, absorb air pollution, prevent flooding. They have what's called, I was just reading an article today called the sponge effect. Um, we need to create housing so that we have fewer commuters. And then we need to improve public transportation, and I'm really thrilled. I mean, some good news is that if the federal government he just the five hundred million dollars that we've requested for, the Morehilly administration has agreed to move forward with the reconstruction of I ninety, which includes West Station, which would be a transportation hub in Alston that would help commuters to come in from the west. So that would be for commuter rail and buses. So it could really make an extraordinary difference for Cambridge. So public transportation and housing are, are both gonna help us. Um, uh, we need to encourage biodiversity, and I, I must say that I feel like at Magazine Beach, uh, some, which is our seventeen-acre oasis in the city that I've been involved in for going on thirteen years. Um, it, it has provided just tremendous benefit for people from all over the city as a place to picnic, as a place to gather, to have reunions, to connect with nature. And uh, so there is no question that open space uh, is essential uh, for all of us.
So I think I mentioned earlier on that I have a background in planning. And I think that as we move forward, as the mayor has said, we have very limited land, and we have many competing uses. And I think as we look at the different parts of the city, we should have a plan as to where we're going to be putting affordable housing, commercial development, and the L-Wife Cardangle Plan that was just completed, I think is a model that we should be using across the city. It looks at affordable housing, commercial, open space, green space, and what the things that we need to really have a healthy and vibrant community. So that is one of the things I think we should adopt as our standard um, standard policy and standard planning is to use that as a particular model. We have very many competing needs. One of them, as we've already mentioned, is affordable housing. And unfortunately, the way the AHO two amendments were written, setbacks and height were the two major things that got changed. When you take away the setbacks, the possibility for keeping open space is limited. And I think this is one of the things for me, as I was looking at AHO two, just to focus on height and density and not consider the open space that's gonna be required to have quality of life was a disappointment, quite frankly. So I really think as we look forward, we need to have a planning that takes all of these factors into account.
Yeah, so um, I will do anything for more affordable housing. Um, and I'm really proud to have worked uh, on the Affordable Housing Overlay with Councilor Zim and Mayor Sidiq this past term. I actually have drafted. Um, you know, I think that uh, it's really important that we move forward on that, and I do just wanna correct the record that there is a thirty percent open space requirement in the Affordable Housing Overlay, and we did not eliminate. Yes, it's true. Uh, and so uh, yeah, but I wanna, I wanna talk about biotech, right? I wrote a zoning petition that would have restricted biotech development in Central Square, Harvard Square, Inman Square, Quarter Square. I don't think most of you, most of you would probably agree that it's not a good idea to just have Kendall Square march down Mass Ave and take over Central Square, our cultural district, right? I wrote a zoning petition along with Quinton that got three hundred and fifty signatures. We submitted it to the city council, and they voted it down one to eight without any serious consideration. So if I'm elected, I'm going to reintroduce that petition, because I don't think it's a rational use of our very limited land to just allow biotech to take over all of our squares. I'm not anti-science. Kendall Square is very wonderful, and we're also gonna get a new Kendall Square in L-Wife, thanks to the zoning that was passed. But we don't need it to be in Central Square or Inman or Quarter or Harvard, um, or Broadway either. Um, and, and so that's important to me. The last thing I wanna say, um, is just that, you know, on little infrastructure projects, we need to think about how, the choices that we're making. The, the Carl Baron Plaza here has seven or eight mature trees. They're beautiful, right? And they're all gonna be cut down, um, as part of the River Street redesign. The city has not presented any rational reason why those trees are going to be cut down, and the implication, the thing that I've sort of been wondering is, is are we doing it to make that intersection hostile to the homeless people who stay there? And you know, I think it's a real shame, because that's not gonna do anything to help homelesses. It's not gonna make those people go away, and we're gonna be ten to twenty years behind on the tree canopy that exists there. Thank you.
So uh, I'm just gonna share some visuals here. Um, that'll be on my website, federicoforcouncil.net. This is um, this is from the city hall page. It's uh, Cambridge Community Greenhouse Gas Inventory. The big part is buildings, buildings, um, that are. Of the twelve largest buildings in Somerville in Cambridge that are going up, nine are in Cambridge. We start, this is from the Boston Business Journal. Uh, MIT Site Five blocks in at two hundred and eighty feet, and at one twenty-one Broadway in Cambridge, we go up to four hundred and seventy-six feet. Nine of the twelve buildings in Cambridge. Um, today, yeah, indeed, uh, a huge win for Massachusetts, Cambridge to serve as a site for national hope for lifestyle and research. So folks, uh, development is coming in whether we like it or not. It's Joe Biden, and I think it's a wonderful thing. Uh, I am a Democrat, but I know this election is not, probably not really. Uh, some just basic reminders about heat islands, okay, and the, the way uh, the way, the way uh, heat islands are created, uh, when you build uh, bigger buildings. And I would like you all to visit the site and see this uh, uh, Affordable Housing Overlay map. Um, the red, the pink sections indicate the corridors that are going up twelve stories. The red section indicates the sections that are going up fifteen stories. Take a look at this map and decide for yourselves if the Joe shouldn't be amended. That's important down the road. Um, here's a typical visual from Kendall. Five stories municipal building from a hundred and twenty years ago, surrounded by twelve, fifteen-story buildings. Now.
Thank you.
So we support more affordable housing in the city of Cambridge. We're gonna sit down with the developers, we're gonna bring them in, we're gonna talk to them, we're gonna have an ordinance. They have, they have the trees, they have the ignition controls, um, gas controls. Um, you, you bring them in. You guys are welcome to come in as well. We'll have a talk group, we'll have an ordinance, and have to follow the ordinance. That's it. That's like the rule. And um, we'll bring in the superintendent, uh, of the building department, then they have to follow. Then we have feedback, you know, we have to, you know, keep an eye on. I, we know Harvard's gonna be okay, and we know MIT's gonna be okay. Um, it's just a couple of things that we need. Trees, emissions, um, follow the rules. All of our, don't forget that middle, the middle income, the middle income people, which is me and you, you may need a board of authorities too, and don't forget jobs. What about youth apprenticeship program? They have no jobs for kids. All the buildings down there, there's no jobs. So we're gonna add jobs for youth apprenticeship programs. Makes sense to me. I'm a union carpenter. I'm a shop steward. I'm all union. If you're in a union, I'm the right person for you. All right, equal pay for women too. That's where you get equal pay. You gotta add that. That's big business. You gotta be paid. You've got to be paid. And the unions set a standard. They set a standard. You take an apprenticeship program. You, um, internships. You take an apprenticeship program, you, internships. All that stuff matters, all these things matter. So I'm sure everything will be fine with these developers. We just put an ordinance together that they, that we often live with. Bike lanes, trees, parks, wherever it is. At the University.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. bregmore.com, thank you.
So I have two positive things that we're going to get to at the end. But I just wanted to start off with that, you know, I would ask for a little bit of like, and but the, when we talk about housing, right? Like I had someone who came to me who was talking about how, you know, she was, you know, facing domestic abuse and wanted to move out, but lived in a affordable housing, just wasn't a new unit available for her to move into. Another woman who had cancer and was in a studio affordable housing unit and wanted to upgrade to a one-bedroom, so her husband and her could sleep in different bedrooms, because all the cancer threatened, it meant that he had to sleep on the floor. Like affordable housing is really real for people, and it really does matter. And for all the criticism we get about the Affordable Housing Overlay and all the applause we got for L-Wife, L-Wife has the same place in the AHO. The AHO, yes, makes setbacks optional. The L-Wife zoning bans setbacks for a huge chunk of it, right? It wants a street wall in that, saying that that's preferable in business districts. So like the AHO and the L-Wife zoning, if you look at the language, they're not that different. And I would ask you why there's such a negative feedback for the AHO, but not for L-Wife, which is Marquerate Housing and Labdile? I don't think it's intentional, but like it really is painful for a lot of people to listen to these conversations, but don't join us to that. In terms of positive things looking forward, I've been a really big supporter of Memorial Drive, of closing it over the weekend, so we have more green space and more space to walk and enjoy ourselves. And I think that as part of the I-90 project, one of the big things that, you know, I've been talking about is redoing Memorial Drive, so it goes from four lanes down to two. And we have extra green space in that area. And also, you know, I think that having a holistic look, as we just started doing on Monday, around Central Square, in terms of having a proper square, around having proper open and meeting space as we involve and have that housing conversation, to really make sure it's a cultural space where we have, you know, a permanent starlight and all those things would be really good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Here, I am with the last question, and I'll start with Councilor Zim at this time. So low-income communities and communities of color in Cambridge are more severely affected by the impacts of climate change in our fossil fuel economy. Think degraded air quality, rising temperatures, and vulnerability to flooding. If elected, what would be your top priority policy to address these inequities? And you all have 30 seconds. Thank you.
So that's a great question. I think in terms of moving transit access is one of the biggest. I talked before about working with the MBTA in terms of improving bus service. I think we really need to focus in on trying to get accountability from the MBTA for mass transit, and specifically the Red Line, it's been really deteriorating. As we recently saw, the state has even been hiding to us. You fault that they've known about the Red Line extension. I think that, you know, as city council, we pay into the system and we play into each year. We really need to hold them accountable and make sure that we're actually getting the improvement that we expect.
Yep.
You just finished speaking about air quality. I would mention OSHA. OSHA monitors air quality, that's what they're doing to state. So we would bring in OSHA, and they would monitor the air quality. When, when in the areas that you're talking about, that's very important to keep that standard. And that standard comes from the state. And the low-income areas that you're talking about, they don't have trees in that area as well. And they don't have jobs as well, they don't have jobs.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, bregmore.com, thank you.
This isn't a home. He plays soccer at Danahue Park, he lives on New Street.
Give him the mic.
I'll start over. This isn't a home. He's from Eric Tred, he's in Tred. He plays soccer at Danahue Park, he lives on New Street. Lives in a low-rise, mid-rise, three, four-story public housing unit. He left 21 Walden Square because life was very, very difficult in that building. We want to put up a building there covering our road.
Thank you.
My one note to them is more canopy, 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 open spaces.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to talk quickly about two neighborhood-specific projects. One is in North Cambridge, Jerry's Pond, shout out to friends of Jerry's Pond. They got ripped off, the city pulled the rug out from under them, it's not cool. I want to fight to get the city to actually do a study of the feasibility study of Jerry's Pond. The other thing is in the Port, Squirrel Brand Community Garden, it needs work, needs attention. The gardeners of color in that, in that garden, they want to improve the beds, they want to fix the flooding issues. And it would just take a little bit of money to improve that significantly. So those are two projects that I really hope we can do. Thank you.
I would have us implement the Urban Forest Master Plan, looking for spaces that trees can be planted. Is there an opportunity to depave and use permeable materials instead of hardtop there? I said depaving permeable materials. Rain garden drainage is an opportunity to use in order to control flooding. And I think that's all I would say for now. Thank you.
We need to make sure that people have energy-efficient heating and cooling systems, geothermal and heat pumps are sustainable systems. We need to ensure that people, that there are programs to help households convert. I think there's some through the Cambridge Energy Alliance, but we need to learn more about that. And we need to expand our open spaces. I agree with you, Dan, we need to invest at Jerry's Pond. That is an extraordinary, we have an extraordinary opportunity there to turn the pit into a pond that would provide nature and open space.
I'd say, you know, on Jerry's Pond, having run up right across the street, I think it's shameful that the city is spending, we've spent millions on the foundry, millions on the PS. We have not spent anything on, on this area, and we're relying on a private developer to do everything. And I think that's not right, so we can do more. You know, we're finally looking at the feasibility of connection and connectivity across the tracks. You're a job, that's really important. And finally, I'm really excited to work on bringing induction stove loader kits for our library. Thank you. Okay, thank you. This was our last question, right? So we'd like to thank all the.
Yeah, yes.